You're welcome.
Remember know when you need to do that.
It's fine.
I understand.
We've got a triple crown wrestling champ.
You know where the game is?
Give you an opportunity or if I can, I'm not a very happy.
Not buying that.
Oh.
Scott, were you hearing something?
Well, sometimes I think it's.
Am I right?
Is this part of the amazing?
Yes.
Oh, yes. That makes sense.
Yes.
I have that same thing actually.
Triple crown.
It's been good.
What's a triple?
Very kind to me.
What style, what styles of wrestling do we get?
I just want to make sure if you don't.
Looking at the administrative structure.
Freestyle, both that's.
First time ever.
Kind of starting at five zero.
First time ever for.
So don't. Nice. Well, see the little heads.
One thing that doesn't work for some reason. The system isn't working yet. I think it's still related to the. It's saying that. License and expired. It's not working. Fashion, so maybe it is. Yeah. We have, we have our standard thing. First season, ten and a half, first couple of seasons. Probably better.
Thanks everybody for coming to the August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting. We all rise and pledge allegiance.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, councillor Morris has an excused absence tonight, can't make it. Quick little housekeeping. Two weeks ago, Vincent Mararello started with us and I didn't, uh, didn't introduce him properly, so I'd like to fix that tonight. So tonight on our first work city council meeting, Vincent, welcome. Thank you for being here. This is our new city manager, Vincent Mararello. So we want to wish him the best and thank you.
Appreciate that, man. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Vincent, uh, might have snuck out a letter to you all and told him what kind of treats that he likes and lots in the rain and bags of pork rinds maybe, but I'll leave, I'll leave that till you see his letter. Thank you, Vincent. Next up is, uh, not, well, it is the first and the only as of right now, girls state wrestling champ. I'd like to introduce Chantel Knopfinger. She is our first girls state wrestling champ. First ever, hopefully not the last, but we'll never forget the first. Be standing please, Chantel. Oh, I'm not done.
He never is.
That's right. I gotta look, hi babe. Uh, you have a family here tonight? What are your news?
Um, I have my dad, uh, Dave, and my mom Carla, and then I have my aunt and my uncle, my grandma and my other grandparents. I got everyone here today.
My wrestling coach Thurman's here too, and he helped a lot throughout the season.
Well, I know he had a lot of other teammates who went to state. We want to recognize them as well. I don't have all their stats in front of me, but, uh, we do want to recognize all those students and athletes that did go to state for Crestwell and represent this year. So good job, Coach. Good job, Chantel. And, um, a couple of stats for her. So I want to read this real quick. It is with great pride that the city council, city Crestwell, the city council congratulated Chantel Knopfinger on her triple crown championship in wrestling for the state, bringing the first ever girl state championship for wrestling onto Crestwell. The triple crown includes first in state, a hundred forty-five pound weight class in three different styles, which is crazy. Freestyle, Greco-Rome wrestling and folk style, which I know two of those. Not a wrestling guy, but a lot of respect for that. That's impressive, young lady. Three different styles and win them all. Good for you. On behalf of the city, city council staff and citizens of Crestwell, I offer congratulations to you, Chantel, who brought back this championship to our great city. I'm gonna come down up front, we'll take a picture with your parents and hand you your recognition.
Five bucks if you could throw it.
Is that open to me too?
Let's take some pictures first.
Okay.
What I just read is to her, Chantel, for her championship, the recognition from the city and the city council and all the citizens. Okay, Caitlin, you get front and center, so.
Yes.
Call mom down to take that. If I need a stretch. How you wanna do it?
Prowled down a little.
Yeah, do it.
So she's the new mayor now, right?
Do you need an ambulance?
A little hurt, white baby. Hundred forty-five pounds, my eye. Thank you, Chantel, and congratulations from the city of Crestwell, the city council, and everyone else who doesn't know that needs to know. Congratulations, excellent job. Thank you. All right, one more little piece of merit report. I want to say thank you to the person who does a lot of work and I don't think she gets recognized for it. Uh, Caitlin, you, buddy, I appreciate you a lot. I don't think I've had a chance to say thank you as much, but the last seven or eight months has been a lot. And without you, I don't know what I could have gotten as much done. So thank you for all your hard work for the city and all that you do, and it seems like it's always, I don't know, ask Caitlin. I don't know, ask Caitlin. Caitlin's got that information. Let me talk to Caitlin. So I want to recognize you for all your hard work and that everybody can hear out loud that we appreciate you and that you're undervalued. I appreciate all your hard work. Okay, now the easy stuff. Uh, we do have a couple of citizens who'd like to speak. They're willing to wait to the actual items on the agenda. So we'll go to correspondence. Does anybody have any issues or questions with correspondence? Counselor Kent?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to check that we could ensure that we discuss this at a city council work session coming up.
Correspondence?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, in regards to what they were requesting, uh, what we can do in the regard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Caitlin and city manager Vincent. Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so with that, we'll move on to consent calendar. All items are, excuse me, are considered routine and will be acted by one motion unless pulled for correction. Has anybody reviewed the minutes? Anybody got any questions? Okay. All right, well, I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Castillo?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Have a second? Counselor Kent seconded it. All who favor to peruse the council minutes, all who oppose, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Number five, Vincent, it's your time to shine, my man.
Thank you.
We want the administrative reporter.
Okay, so in your pack, you have a number of items. Let's start with A, the July, uh, two thousand twenty-five bills. Are there any questions on any of the information you received that staff can answer?
Counselor Kent?
Uh, thank you. There, good. Thank you. Uh, I did have a question on one of them and I just, uh, I just didn't recognize it, so, uh, well, there was two. The big one was, uh, my apologies, uh.
It's one hundred and two out.
Yeah, it's, I may be sunstruck. Well, one of them was, uh, I just noticed a new one, Chris Miller Electrical Company, and, uh, I looked them up and, uh, they look like they're a local company and that's really cool, uh, like when we can, uh, when our businesses are getting business. But the other one, I am so sorry that, uh, oh, the city county insurance services, uh, that is huge, uh, one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred, one hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents, and I was just wondering if you could remind me what that's for, uh, but it might also be in the heat.
Sure, I can answer that, uh, councillor Kent. Uh, the CIS first of all is our city county insurance. Um, they represent the cities and counties as a collective group and we all buy into the insurance pool. That covers our general liability, our property insurance, um, workers' comp insurance, everything insurance basically, basically, uh, for the year, so that's the one time.
And, uh, so that's just the normal amount that we pay. It's nothing specific came up within the insurance and, uh, okay, great, perfect.
No, one thing I might, I might note that, we talked about it in the budget, but just to bring it up again, um, they did some appraisals because of the way property values have gone up, and so it doesn't necessarily affect the premium, but it's per the amount insured, so of course is the, the appraised values of the city. Buildings went up, so did the insurance dollars. Yeah, the other item you asked about, um, Chris Miller, uh, we use him from time to time, and this time it was on the, um, resiliency hub. He wired in the containers at the airport.
Correct. So it's part of the resiliency grant that O-Dark received for the city, and it was for the groundwork.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, great questions.
Counselor?
Um, I know a couple of years ago I asked about whether or not we do our due diligence for our constituents in shopping insurance to make sure that we're always getting the most favorable, favorable rates. Have we done that in the last couple of years since I brought it up?
We've looked at what it would cost to do insurance through another provider. I think we had somebody from the budget community also come to meet with us as well to see if we maybe we can do a high deductible benefit plan. Um, it didn't pencil out. Um, it's something we can continue to look at though until maybe we find a better deal. I don't know that, um, CIS is gonna be, um, underrated because, uh, um, they do cover a larger pool. So if we, if we go in as a small pool, it might affect us in the market.
Just makes me a little concerned that we just continually renew the same company. That's not really smart practice in private businesses, so it's just something I like to keep an eye on. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else? Counselor Dix?
Well, I noticed on, uh, there's another, uh, city of Conish Group again for twenty-one thousand dollars. Is this a monthly charge?
It's a quarterly charge, so we, we pay quarterly for a contract with city Conish Group. They provide, um, plan reviews and building inspection services and the building official as part of our building permit program.
Counselor?
Twenty-one thousand dollars a quarter, so eighty-four thousand dollars a year. That's like one full-time employee.
It's, it's getting close, but we're talking, I think that's four employees at the city of Conish Group.
Okay.
Yeah, they, it can't be one employee that does all of those functions.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you.
Great question.
Anyone else? Good question. All right.
Okay, the next item in your pack is the Lane County showers. Uh, call for service report, and Sergeant Speder will come up and answer any of your questions that you might have.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so if you take a look at the calls for service, you'll see that calls are up, case numbers are down, which is great. That's actually a really good sign. Um, as we talked about earlier in the year, it gets busy during the summer especially. We stay really busy with calls for service in Crestwell, uh, but the case numbers are down, which means the calls aren't amounting to crimes a lot of times, which is awesome. Um, in the last month, we had the Fourth of July parade, which was a busy day. Um, we had a couple deputies. We were running a little short, but we were able to make that work with the chamber, and uh, I think the parade turned out really well, and then we had National Night Out last week, which was awesome. Um, a big shout out to, you know, councillor Kramer and Dukes and city manager Mararello. He, they, they made the city booth run so that I could run around, I could take them with my head cut off or everything else. So big thanks for that. Um, it was a good time. I feel like it was, everybody had a good time, it seemed like. Deputy Fulton won the fighting contest, allegedly. But, uh, it was a good time. Speaking of Deputy Fulton, he is now full-time in Crestwell. Um, like I mentioned, last month, he is a SWAT guy, which we haven't had in Crestwell for a very long time, so he brings a skill set that is, uh, kind of balances me out being the negotiator. We can argue about stuff and, um, I can tell him that I'm right all the time and we can go like that. That's how negotiations work. So, um, we have one member living crime. It was a juvenile to juvenile crime. I'll let you fill in the blanks on that, but we're working through that. It sounds like there might be some criminal charges for juvenile as a result of that, so uh, we are working through that. Um, if you take a look at our citations, we have tons of license restrictions and insurance violations. Um, those are all, almost all driving while suspended drivers, uninsured drivers, getting them off of the road, making our roads safer. Uh, and in conjunction with that, a lot of that comes with inbound tows. Their vehicles get towed as well to further discourage them from driving. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have. It was a pretty busy month. Um, I know that, uh, so I, it was mentioned last month that I was gonna be taking over some of the code enforcement function, and that has kept me a little busy, and so there's, uh, a lot less time for me to drive around looking for traffic violations because I'm trying to run around and catch up on the code stuff too, so.
Counselors? Counselor Dix?
Have you been finding a lot of code violations?
There's been a handful. Um, I've looked at, uh, every, every code complaint that's come in and been forwarded to me, I've looked at and uh, basically decided this is one that there is or there isn't. Tried to determine, there's a lot that are kind of unfounded. Um, but there have been a couple where I've had to have conversations with people before citations. I haven't issued any citations for code stuff yet, and I hope to keep it that way. I like to handle it at the lowest level, but um, if somebody is gonna be resistant to following the rules, we'll have to cross that bridge. Thank you.
Counselors? I got one for you. Um, the pest controls on the east side of Crestwell, guy, did you guys get that picture that some citizens had sent to you?
Just saw it.
Okay.
Right before this meeting, and I was explaining, uh, what I typically do when we have these companies come in for solicitation. If I contact, if I can contact them, I contact them and say, these are the rules. Like, I'm gonna get phone calls about you guys no matter what, but these are the rules. You need to follow them. If you don't, you're gonna be getting citations. You're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be having to deal with that. Like, I know you guys are just doing your jobs, but when people tell you to leave, you need to leave. Like, it's that simple.
I assume if there was no, um, identification, it's gonna be hard for you to try and track them down, but at least you have a picture of
Yeah.
the guys roaming around here being forceful with citizens.
Yes, and so the, the picture, uh, that you're mentioning was shown to me tonight, and I've never seen that person before, but now I'm gonna be watching for him to especially make sure that we have a conversation.
I had a really aggressive one come to my door a few days ago. I wonder if it's the same.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Counselor Castillo?
Sergeant Spoder, I will give you some, cut you some slack on speeding, Sergeant, because I know you have to be. So, so, but my question, I guess, goes up there to city manager Mararello, is then, so how is the, um, hiring process for the code enforcement, um, officer going?
Um, we're taking the opportunity to review the position description and see if it still fits our needs. So we're taking a little bit of a step back. We're also looking at the job title with regard to the description to make sure our recruitment and the job description is clear to anybody that's applying, because it, it's a code enforcement officer title. And involved or within the job description are items that we need as part of what we do in Crestwell, but are not typically, uh, included in a code enforcement like the, the Backflow program or the Grease Trap program that we have. That's critical for us to do, but it's not typically a code enforcement officer or included in, in that description. So it's anticipated, um, we're meeting Wednesday with the, with the department heads to get feedback on that, or I am. So I'm hoping by the end of the week, we can start packaging up the recruitment and then, uh, release the recruitment next week.
Thank you. Any comments on that? I got one. I appreciate that approach, new manager Mararello, I really do, because I think our last code enforcement got burned out pretty quick and there was a laundry list of things for her to do, and, uh, I think that wore her out. So I appreciate that approach and to see if, if we are on the, on the same page and if we are delaying the, the job duties correctly and that might get the right person in there. So thank you for doing that. Anyone else? Let Sergeant Spoder off the hook. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The next report in your pack is the city attorney report. Um, it looks like our city attorney accrued about ten hours of attorney time this month. A lot of it was, uh, some follow-up work with a new, uh, request to do, uh, solicitation preparing for engineering services. The engineer at the airport is retiring and we're going back out for an RFP to get another engineer out there. So nothing unexpected with the workload that we've had or some of the requests that we've made.
Counselors, any questions on that report? No? All right, we're at number, letter D.
Uh, code enforcement, if there's anything specific, Sergeant Speder can, um, answer any questions, but we've, we've shifted the code enforcement to the sergeant. He's been helping us out a lot while we have a little bit of lapse in, in filling the position.
Any questions? Pretty much standard. All right, you're off the hook.
And then finally, the last report is the building permit recap. That gives you an outline of the building permits that we've, uh, issued this month.
Questions, comments? Love mail, hate mail?
I just have. If you guys, they help me out in this, um, is this report like the format that we have sit in this month? Is that sufficient for you? Do you want me to give you more or less information? Because the old report had some things on it that we don't really practice much, so I have to go in other places and find them. And so if I could get from you guys what you want to know would be helpful. So make sure I'm giving you the information that you're wants in the reports. Does this, this one just give you everything that came in this month, and then quarterly I can do like the reports or annually? You know, this is what happened the whole year. This is what, how many things have been built and.
Counselor?
I, I personally like to see how things are trending, so I like to see, um, how like this month, you know, what, what, how it compares to a snapshot of the same time last year.
Perfect. Okay, that's.
So just an idea.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. I like some of the snapshots that Chelsea used to take of what it looked like, what it didn't. Not, you don't have to snapshot everything, but some of the bigger ones I like where she, this is what it looked like. I went and had a talk. Same with, same with the building permits too.
Oh, okay.
Like you said, the trending portion of it, I guess we'd be expanding on that, that she put in a little bit more grasp of where each building permit was, what was going towards electrical construction, which kind of construction.
That was you though, right?
Was that, was that you already doing?
Yeah, that was her already doing.
Okay, well, without mine, good job.
All right, yeah, if you come up with anything, if you want, you know, just let me know.
Counselors, anything else? Any other comments for Angela? No? Okay, perfect.
The only other comment I would make on that, I just want to clarify why I'm asking for that, because I think it's important for us to see how we're trending, to see if, you know, things are going down, and maybe we need to go, hey, what's going on? Where are people coming and, and getting permits, that kind of thing, you know? Just, just keep the pulse on how we're doing.
Perfect. All right, that's it. No other comments, questions? Okay, moving on. So we'll go to number six. We have council action items, we have a public hearing. I'll let Curtis go ahead and talk, and then I think we'll have the speakers who want to speak come up and speak, and then we'll do the public hearing after. That's okay?
Good, thank you. And the first hearing is for the annexation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Our only next five seventy-one annexation, correct?
Yeah. Uh, Caitlin, were you able to pass the last email correspondence?
It is.
Okay, cool, got it. Okay, so in front of you, um, it's a type four land use decision. It's to annex in nine point, about nine and a half acres, uh, for Nathan Markville's property. And so in order for a site to be eligible for annexation, it has to be, uh, all three things. It has to be within the city's urban growth boundary, it has to be contiguous to city limits, and urban services must be available. So urban services are water, sewer and, and roadways. And so, um, so the, the property meets all three of those criteria. And so as a part of the annexation, uh, application, there's procedure, uh, so we have to send a neighbor notice to, to everyone who's within uh, three hundred feet of the property. Uh, we have to make sure that everyone who is a registered voter on the property, they have to sign the petition. Um, there's a measure forty-nine waiver, and so along with, I looked into that a little bit more. It's, it's a liability protection. So if a landowner claims that a municipality or local government make a land use regulation change that devalues their property, a property owner can file a measure forty-nine waiver claim. And so by, by Nathan annexing into the city, he is kind of foregoing that claim. So basically he can't make the city pay for something by changing land use regulations. My understanding is that it's a little bit more common in the county than within city limits, but, um, it is a best practice.
Thank you.
Of course. Um, and so at the last meeting, uh, we have a few questions come up, like, like how will the, the site, um, like redirect stormwater? I think that's a great question, and I, I think that's a concern at a staff level as well, especially because there is floodplain kind of surrounding the property too, so I'm not exactly sure how to answer those questions right now, but, um, I just want to highlight that that is a, that's a, it's a real invalid concern.
Counselors, any questions? Comments?
Counselors, any questions? Comments?
Did you read this correspondence?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you have, do you have any, any comment about any of the concerns that they have? Is that?
To me in reading it, I saw it as a private property owner via private property owner dispute.
Okay.
And I don't, I think some of the issues that that property owner raised are also stormwater concerns. And, I mean, my opinion is that by annexing this property, by developing it, then we can address the stormwater concerns kind of at that time. Right now, it's a vacant parcel, and so it's kind of hard for, we don't have any tools at this point.
That's fair.
We can't hold it to any regulation or liability if it's not actually annexed in yet. So we, you can't fight or recommend anything until it's annexed incorrectly.
That's true.
Technically, it's not. It's just like a motion. We can sit here and talk all day, but until you have a motion, the second, it's not really real.
Yeah.
So it's a better way to explain it to the audience, people who are listening, that if we do annex it in, there's still a lot more hoops to be jumped through, that we're not just gonna leave it four feet above everyone else's houses. This is, we're letting this property be built on, but now we're gonna start setting rules.
Yeah, I think that's a great way to frame it, Mayor, that this annexing this property brings the property a little bit more into city control.
And I agree with you. I kind of had that same assessment. I just wanted to, and you have asked for this to go to a work session, which I think is a good place for it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? No? Then I'm gonna let Scott, I believe this is, you want to speak? I'm gonna let Scott speak, and then we'll do a public hearing.
I prepared a PowerPoint.
How long is it?
I'm gonna be, trying to be as quick as possible. Ran through it earlier, it's about 10 minutes.
Cut that in half. We didn't only give three minutes, we're gonna give more since you put out the effort, but...
Yeah. I read that. I'll shoot for half. Usually I'll hit about 70% on the second one.
Oh, you're opening a public hearing already?
Can you introduce, who is this?
Scott, when you're ready, can you?
Yeah, I can just start introducing myself. I'm Scott Cummings. I'm an attorney, an attorney here in town. Up until last week, my office was across the street. Now it's over by Tractor Supply. And I've got, right now, two employees, but we moved into a bigger space, gonna be hiring probably four more over the next six months. And I had a great graphic to show exactly how I'm related to this property that is at issue. But hopefully we'll get it set up here. But basically, my backyard kind of goes up to the property that's being asked to be annexed. And, yeah, so that's where I live with my family, my wife and kids. I got two kids in the school district.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, there's one of them right there.
Open the public hearing first, then.
Her name is Brooklyn. I'm just responding to, okay. There we go. Here's what I was talking about. Now watch. There. That's, that's where we're at. And, okay. So I'll also say that, so I got my law degree at U of O, I also got my undergrad degree there in environmental policy. So I don't do anything with property or environment or zoning or anything like that in my practice, but I do have some background studying, that sort of thing, in undergrad. Published research actually predominantly focused on NIMBYism, you know, not in my backyard kind of thing. So that's not what I'm here to do today. It's the last thing I'm here to do today. So I'm gonna try and keep it on point. I do have some concerns about the annexation that I just want to make sure that the council is aware of, and that's why I'm here today. So, and feel free if you have got any questions, as we're going along, to interrupt. So, first thing is that there doesn't seem to be a demand for more low-density residential housing in the area. That, the area that I've highlighted in blue, which on the map behind me, is the subdivision that is available right now, where they've built, I counted them on the way over here, it's either six or seven. And then they've just been sitting empty lots for well over a year. And many of the houses that have been built are just, are sitting there unsold as well. And that's despite this very attractive financing offer here, and the fact that these houses are on the market for $500,000, which is a pretty good price for the size of them, the four bedrooms and things. And, and so I wonder, you know, if there's 26, or suppose like either 18 or 19 lots just sitting there right now that aren't being used because there is no demand for them, that would suggest that there's no demand for even more housing right, right next to it. And, you know, that might seem surprising, having read the Exhibit C, the materials today, specifically page five, which seems to contradict what I'm saying. So the, right there, that analysis, and when it says that analysis, it's talking about the Crestwell Housing Needs Analysis from 2019. So that analysis noted that our low-density residential zone has a demand for 485 units. So that's the total demand for housing for the entire city, existing and non-existing. The way that that's worded makes it sound like that was a deficit in 2019, but it is projecting over the next like 25 years, the need, basically. And so what that number really is, is 112. And like I said, I mean, it's right here on Sunday Drive, we've got a good 18, 19 lots just sitting there waiting to be built on, currently. And so here's, here's a sort of case in point. There was once a beautiful event center, many people from all over the, all over the country, actually, in different states and everything, who've been married there, they talked fondly of it. That, you know, we're well-known for, there was a gym, there was a pool, a salon, all these amenities that now no longer exist because it's being used by Lab Golf as a corporate headquarters and warehouse. So it just, the character and the amenities that were available in this location at one time, say back in 2019, when that needs analysis was conducted, no longer exists in the area. In fact, there's very little in the way of amenities and businesses and things like that. I mean, quite frankly, I think if we were going to annex a portion, a portion of additional land into the area for some sort of use, it should probably be something like that, like a gym, grocery store, or something that might attract more demand for residential housing that doesn't exist right now. And this has caused some issues with safety. So Sunday Drive, and I'm gonna go through some pictures real quick, and I'm starting about to time.
Give me a couple more minutes.
So if you look, the, if you follow along on the map, it's highlighted in blue, like generally the area that's showing in these pictures, all right? So the low demand in the area has left broken sidewalks at this windy street, which is Sunday Drive. And so my kids have to ride their bikes in the street, and there's tight corners and things. And it's a through street, by the way, which is very close to this proposed subdivision. So that would increase traffic through there. So, I mean, you're just gonna, it's gonna be more cars and going through, so a higher chance of kids getting hit. And it's a further illustration of the hazards that are presented by having, you know, just annexing property to build on for residential use when there isn't enough demand for it. All right? So the last point here is the flooding. I gather that there was an email sent about it already. So here's a picture of my backyard in March. There's a seasonal floodplain that runs through, you know, all these people's backyards here. Many of us have young kids. I mean, you see the, the kid stuff in the background, and, you know, like right now, it gets high enough it comes up to their ankles. And there's increased runoff, whether it's stormwater or anything like that. I mean, it already floods every, every year, but if you've got roofs and asphalt and other impervious surfaces, like sidewalks and things, it's gonna increase the water level that comes into our backyards every year, and that's being used as backyards right now. So it's just incompatible with the existing use in the area. And I know the inclination is, well, that's not what we're signed today. There's not been a specific proposal for development, things like that. There's a permitting process, we're gonna address all that. Here's why I'm concerned. Nevertheless, because I, believe me, I understand that. So, I mean, just, I'll go through some pictures, but basically, the property would be coming with unclean hands. It's, I mean, right now, the owner is, I don't know if it's the owner, whoever's managing it, has brought in a bunch of fill and spread it all around with, you know, heavy machinery, done a bunch of excavating all in the floodplain. And I mean, it was mentioned that the property is adjacent to a floodplain. It's actually also in the floodplain. So I gather the intention here was to try and build himself out of the floodplain. So this is back in April, it's taken from my backyard. And so, I mean, I'd go through and show you that, like, it wasn't an accident that that happened.
Stop, Scott. We gotta move forward. I respect you, I appreciate you. I absolutely agree with everything you said. I actually brought it up at the last meeting because of the floodplain. If there's a serious issue, I know it sits three or four feet off ground level of the rest of the homes there. So I, my concern is with you as well. I think that's the biggest, biggest one right there. We can't impact everybody else's property just for one property, regardless, it's one house or 20 houses. But I appreciate you coming in and speaking very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public meeting as well, so if anybody wants to speak.
Would you be able to answer any of his questions?
You can, if you want to speak. It's a public hearing. All right? Public hearing's open, if you want to come up, Nathan.
I'm not real well-spoken, so I'll do the best I can.
Will you say your name for the camera?
Nathan Marple. So I'm a proponent of this annexation. So there, there's a huge housing crisis. It's been, you know, deemed out by the, by the, well, by the government. The reason the houses don't sell on Sunday Drive is because there's no downstairs master bedrooms, and they're just not built right for the area. If you're gonna build a house like that, you need to build them, you know, for a single-family, single-family homes. So, I mean, that's my opinion on that. So there's a huge amount of work to do in the stormwater. It really should capture all the water and send it away from this property, so there's not gonna be any water released. It should make, should not make your area any better. And all the filling was done with a permit and with an engineer, and we've avoided any area that was an actual floodway. So, all of that was, it's not like we just went out there and started filling. We, you know, we got a permit with the county, it's all engineered. I mean, I specifically said, "Hey, we don't want to hurt anybody else here." So, we're avoiding all of the actual floodways, you know, completely. I didn't want to fill, that's just the way it's done now, because the government wants your, you know, they've raised all the floodplains. It's, yeah, so it's not my idea, I'm just trying to follow the rules. What else do I want to say? But yeah, all done with, all done, you know, through engineering. There's a lot of work to do on the storm, I know that. That's not a problem. There's another concern, a guy I had with, you know, I promised him I'd fill up next to his house, which I totally intend to do. Total, I mean, it's all gonna look better. I was, I was in there a few months ago, just trying to clean up the mess, and the county shut me down, which I said I'm not really filling, I'm just moving stuff around to clean it up. So I was gonna address a lot of these issues then, and I got shut down. So, that's kind of where I'm at. Yeah, I'm sure I'll think of five more things as soon as I sit down.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, it might, maybe it's not obvious to me, but why did the county shut you down?
Because my fill permit had expired. So we filled all the way into winter where we couldn't do anything else. It was just too wet to go any further. And then in my findings, they offered, they said you can have a, you can have an extension, I think a two-year extension. When I went in for that extension, they said, "Oh, fees change in the floodplains, we cannot give you that extension anymore." So I actually think I had a legal argument there, because it was in the findings of fact in the permit, but I didn't fight it. So I wasn't filling anymore like the pictures he has of, or of me like three months ago, just trying to clean up, because it's kind of a firehouse, or I want to get it cleaned up, right? I want to get it all cleaned up and smoothed out. And so that's why, I guess you can't even move dirt at all in a floodplain anymore without a permit. Like, you can't even just scrape your dirt around anymore. I mean, that's...
Makes property ownership kind of daunting, doesn't it?
It's tough, man. No, it's tough. And that's new. I've been scraping dirt around for 35 years. That's kind of new in the last two years.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Counselor Lewis?
I was kind of curious. So what kind of, what are you trying to do with this development anyways?
So, nothing like what's on Sunday, because nobody likes those houses. It's gonna be just like what, kind of where Nick lives. It'll be between, it'll be kind of like what Nick, what Nick lives in, or what's on like Greenbrier right in there. So it's just gonna be, it'll be single-family housing.
Please don't say where we live, that's not appropriate.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Please, we already have my
I'm sorry.
He didn't give an address, you're good.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So...
I live by the dome.
Yeah, so, single-family housing, like what's on Greenbrier, you know, probably 1,400 to 2,000 square foot houses.
How many do you plan to put in?
What's that?
How many did you say you planned to put in?
There's 45 lots right now on the plan. And we just got done with the subdivision over here on Boulder, Boulder Loop, and we, I mean, we can't really keep houses, if a house gets built, it sells, still within a month, because there's such a lack of inventory.
Thank you, Nathan.
Yep.
Anybody else want to speak? Or we'll close, you can speak.
Libby Smith, resident. With, I was gonna ask how many homes we're going in, about 45 gives me a good idea. I am concerned with the traffic on Dale Cooney. I would like to see more clean, nice, well-kept homes over there. I think that'd be great, because we do have the, you know, there's people that still burn their clean, nice, well-kept homes over there. I think that'd be great, 'cause we do have the, you know, there's people that still burn their trash on Dale Cooney. Neighbor, good neighbors, bad neighbors, whatever. Um, I, I mean, I think more good residents, good neighborhoods, keep the crime levels down and everything too. Um, do provide a place, more places for kids to ride their bikes and walk and other access over there. So that part doesn't concern me, but I do have a concern with the traffic. Um, Dale Cooney already is, can be a drag strip for people at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, and we don't have the law enforcement capacity to handle that, because, I mean, I've been walking many times at, through, it's a dragon down there. And then just that flow, period. Even with the accidents we've had on I-5 lately, I'm noticing so much more of, you know, even Cloverdale and Dale Cooney, all these different outlets being used and sometimes backed up, just to help with the flow of traffic. Um, even, even, um, support the new McDonald's coming in, but we've noticed a traffic like difference right there that's really irritating to get off the, it's super weird. Um, might be something I need to contact ODOT about getting a flasher there instead of, you know, where we could do a, a yellow light always or something that, especially that left-hand turn, 'cause going right should be no problem, but left-hand turns when, when there's a good, a good portion of town living that way. So, so that would be my main concern is, I, I almost was hoping that you were gonna say it was gonna be bigger lots and it was gonna be more like a, you know, couple of acre lots or things like that, just bigger, even three-quarter acre, get bigger backyards and maybe some new, but more, I guess, 'cause I don't know the, the price range you're looking to build in either, so I don't know if that's gonna be the million-dollar homes, or it's gonna be the, you know, 500 or whatever. I like your idea of, yes, we do need those single-level homes coming in, or at least masters on Main for people to be able to access, accessibility of retirement and everything. That is a concern for me, is 45 more homes means potentially, depending on if they have kids or whatever, it could be 90, it could be 100 and some more people accessing that road. And there is always just, it's, any time of day, there's a lot of speeders through there too. There isn't really a lot of posted speed signs in through there, and sometimes I'm even like, is it 35, is it 25, is it 45? Where, you know, where it changes, but I'll notice, 'cause we do have to cross there lots when we're walking that one little, by the cornfield, we have to, you know, and sometimes I'm like, run!
We definitely have sidewalks, the whole way.
The whole way, which will be nice.
And it'll be windy.
That'll be super nice.
Um, I'm not sure how to encourage people, maybe just to go north on Dale Cooney?
Typically, I am always about, hey, Bill, we do need some more nice homes. We're not looking for a bunch more high density, high-density residential, absolutely, we want more single-family homes, but-
Well, no, these are 6,000 square foot lots, and they're, I mean, they're, they're bigger sized-
Absolutely.
People are, cities are wacky.
Absolutely. And I'm a big, I'm America first, I think it's your land, you should be able to do what you want with it. But I do have a little bit of what he said too, where we do have limited land here and there are some real needs that we, I agree with him. I miss, I miss the gem and the, you know, that we have a nice, it was updated, but still. So, I see, I see both sides there, but I definitely am, I, I see it's your land, you should be able to, but there are some considerations. And I would worry too, because being in that area, yes, if all of a sudden yours gets built, 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 and then we have a new floodplain, we're in trouble. We've already had, us and a ton of our neighbors have had, and it, it just, it, I can't even explain, but have a constant battle with, with FEMA and trying to keep us, even though we already paid for tons of extra fill for, when we built, we were already, you know, already, okay, we're building, and we're building for the future, and we're, you know, we, we're, we're trying to project here. And yet they still come back and try to mess with us.
I don't believe in it, probably, I was stoked.
Yeah, no, but I'm using, I'm saying, if, if it happens where yours gets, blah, 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 and all of a sudden we're all in one, that puts, you know, a hun, a hundred and some people in a, and a lot of people on fixed income, so you know.
Yeah, good job, forget the three minutes, young lady.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I didn't sign up to speak, but I would-
It's a public hearing for you, feel free.
I'm Debbie Yee. I didn't plan on speaking, but since I heard you speak, I'd like to ask, um, I know that Scott, the attorney, gave diagrams for the neighborhood, but didn't really address the flow and the flooding that goes all the way down to Cloverdale. It's not just his backyard. It floods that whole trench down there and stays there for quite a long time. And I live in the neighborhood, I agree with the traffic concerns, more traffic concerns, regardless of how many sidewalks you put in. There are a lot of people that not only take their golf courts in and out of there, I'm not a golfer, but in and out, up and down the sidewalks all the time, crossing there's horrendous, but the improvements that would need to be made to Dale Cooney and the safety, not just the safety, but the conditions of the road, it's already rutted and deteriorating just from the traffic that goes to the golf course and lab golf, and the traffic has picked up. It's physically rutted and crumbling. And so the crack seal, or whatever they call that chip seal, didn't hardly last at all. And it's just a thing of livability, but I was not as questionable about it. I've read through some of the documentation about it. It seems like this would help you in dealing with the city instead of the county, because now the county has shut you down. And a couple of years ago, I called to find out why the fill was all of a sudden appearing there, 'cause I was new to the neighborhood. And they said, because the county would let you fill as long as it sat for so many years, and then they had a permit, and because I called the city and they said, not our business, but, but we could certainly tell just by guessing and using our common sense that eventually it's going to be built out for lots. 45 homes in there is not low density. Everyone's been saying low density for quite a long time. I'm really confused what you've called low density. 6,000 square foot lots sound great and attractive, that to me doesn't seem low density at all. Um, it just doesn't. And you can say, well, the reason Sunday Drive homes aren't selling, the economy, the interest rates, there's lots of reasons why. None of us really know why, it's just opinions. But we have inventory on that side of town that isn't selling, and we have other homes that still aren't selling, that are well-established, lovely homes, that still aren't selling. So, to add that and 45 of them, I don't think that answers a housing crisis, in my opinion. But the flooding is a bigger concern for me than anything else. Pushing dirt, and no matter how much you pack it down, or what you do, when you improve all those homes, and then you go into a foundation, and then you go into the plumbing, and you go into the necessary needs to get that home done, and the streets, all that water's going somewhere. And when you put in more infrastructure, it raises up the water that can't go there either, and it just pushes it further down. And I think it's a big concern. I appreciate we're not at the permit process and we're not at the planning process yet, but I think everyone can see what the next shoe that's gonna drop is. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Debbie. Anyone else? Alright, I'm gonna close up the hearing, I'm 6:80 for now. And then, councilors? I'm entertaining a motion. For an alternative idea. Counselor Holt, or Counselor Castillo?
I move that the City Council adopt ordinance number 571, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory known as tax lots 1,000 and 1,001, assessors map 19 dash 03 dash 13 dash 24 to the City of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential.
Thank you. About a second? Counselor Graham seconds it. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Discussion?
Yeah, you wanna discuss?
I do wanna discuss.
I, I think really all I have to say is that I don't think it is my job as a councilperson to tell a property owner what to do with their piece of property. Um, what my job is, is to approve or not approve somebody wanting to annex their property into our city, which I am fully in favor of. I will say that, um, I think that councils can, could do their due diligence. We've already asked to put, um, some concerns on a future work session from this letter that we received today. And I think that, that, um, we should do our due diligence in following this process, making sure, um, that we're following what the Planning Commission is doing. I trust that the Planning Commission and the planners are going to make sure that everything's gonna be done in a way that benefits everyone. And so I'd like to put the faith in, um, our, in the city and in the property owner to do the right thing.
Thank you, Counselor Holt. Anyone else? Counselor Castillo?
I totally agree with you, Counselor Holt, and, uh, and I, um, we are in the very early stages. And I trust and I look forward to, uh, you know, the, the plans and how these, this runoff is gonna be addressed. Um, and I just look forward to it. And I do believe that this will address our housing needs analysis. I don't know how, you know, I agree with, I don't know why houses are selling, not selling, and so forth. That is, you know, your, your risk of belly goes. Uh, but it does address the need, so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselor Castillo. Anyone else? Counselor Kent?
Yeah, I apologize to everybody. I'm very much a slow processor, and this is a, a lot to take in, and I wanna make sure I make the, the right decision and voting for or against, and I would really like that opportunity to do more due diligence and figure out what's happening, so we don't leave anybody out to, to dry or to have to dry, as the case may be.
Are you suggesting moving this? Okay. So Counselor Kent's suggesting a move to work session? Before I ask for a second, is there any other comments?
I think he has to make that an official motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to move that we, uh, I make a motion that we meet at a city where, uh, council work session in order to follow up on this request, given the input that we received today.
Okay. So is there a second time motion? Counselor Duke seconds a motion. Is there any further discussion or comment? Counselor Holt?
I, I'm not sure that, uh, meeting again on this is gonna change my outcome, simply because, again, I go back to the basics. We, our only job is to say yea or nay to, um, our constituent asking to annex his property into the city. Um, it's not up to us to figure out how he develops that property and whether he's doing it right or wrong. That's, that's where I'm at with this, so I would be in no on moving this to the next work session.
Okay. Anyone else? Have any comments? I'll give one. Um, I couldn't agree with you more. I think you said it perfectly. It is our job to say yea or nay. It is Curtis, city manager, the county, it's all their job to decide what and how he can get away with, and I don't mean that he's getting away with anything, but what he can build and what the government says he can build. Um, so I do not believe that we need to take a work session either. I don't think it's prudent, I don't think it make, it makes any sense. Uh, we can continue this at the next work session when it comes to it, and we can discuss further with Curtis when we get more information, 'cause right now all we're doing is allowing it to be annexed. Then there's a lot more stipulations, regulations that can be put on it then. So I think for now, it's literally just strictly letting this citizen build on his property, and then we'll move forward with others down the line. So, I would agree, I don't know if we need to put it to another work session. I think it's a simple yea or nay. Um, so I'm also against that. Anybody else? So we have two things to vote on, if anybody else has any comments. So we got a motion and a second on annexing it in. And then, and then we have a motion to move to a work session. So I'm gonna go with the work session first. So all those in favor to move this to a work session, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion is, does not pass, Counselor Kent is the only one for. Now we'll move to the motion of annexation. So we have a, a motion and a second. Kent?
An ordinance doesn't need to be read twice in the title?
Yes, ma'am.
So Counselor Holt, will you read it twice? Or who did the motion? Caitlin, can you read it for a second time?
An ordinance, wait, sorry. An ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory at assessors map 1903, 1324, tax lots 1,000 and 1,001 to the City of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential.
Caitlin, will you read it one more time, please?
An ordinance approving the annexation of a certain territory at assessors maps 1903, 1324, tax lots 1,000, 1,001 to the City of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential.
Thank you. It's been read twice, it's been motioned, it's been seconded, so now it's voting time. So all those in favor, if that makes sense, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes with Counselor Kent in opposition. Move on to six B. Curtis, that's you again.
Okay. So the next item on the docket is a, a zone change for Crestwell First Foundation to change their comp plan designation from public facility zoning to, to commercial, and the, the new zoning they'll take on is downtown commercial. And this zone change fixes an inconsistency in the comprehensive plan. Uh, the public facility zoning is usually applied to properties that are owned by the public, that are owned by the city, owned by the school district. And, yes, the city used to own this property, but they had since sold it to the Crestwell Heritage Foundation for $1, and then it is now under, uh, Crestwell First Foundation's ownership. And so, if you look in your packet on, you can kinda jump to the back, um, to see how the zoning will be changed, and it'll, it'll kinda align with the neighborhood, and that was the, the kinda the logical transition from public to downtown commercial. And so I think the question that came up at the work session is, why do this now? Um, you, uh, like what's, what's kinda the, the rush? Um, especially given that, uh, Second Street's, that neighborhood's kinda been through a couple of, I mean, they're going through a top project right now. Um, and the reason is because Crestwell First has owned the property for about a year now, and they're trying to make it self-sustaining. And so they came to the city with the idea of having a, a vendor at their property. And with the public facility zoning, um, they're not allowed to have a vendor. Uh, you're kinda limited on nonuses in a public facility zone. And so this zone change, it kinda, again, like fixes inconsistency with the ownership of, of the lot. Um, and it gives the local foundation a little bit more flexibility as to what, what they can do on the property. That's kinda it.
Councilors? Questions or comments?
Yeah.
Counselor Duke?
Um, so, if this changes, now will they be able to operate, uh, these little businesses after hours?
Um, to, to some extent, sure, yeah. I mean, we still have noise, ordinances, and, and all those things.
Anyone else? We're opening up for a public hearing. No? Alright, I'm gonna open up a one-minute window. Counselor Castillo gets his time clock out. Open up for one minute, so if anybody wants to comment. Brandon, I'm still gonna get to you. I think I did it wrong, I gotta do a public hearing first and then, uh, sign up, so.
No, 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 this is a public hearing. You only have to do that if nobody's signed up.
Okay. Brandon, you wanna come up?
My name's Brandon Craig, I live at 169 South Second. I have the property just north of, uh, the Crestwell First building that's on the docket today. Um, I, Jill's a great guy, foundation's been awesome being neighbors with, like, I have nothing but respect, and, and I, I love what they've done with the building and what the Heritage Foundation was able to do prior. My concerns, though, are about parking. Um, as you all know, we on Second Street deal with the Crestwell Bakery, which if we wanna talk about, everybody else talking about the impact of 45 new houses, imagine what the impact of another commercial space next to my, my house will do. Um, I brought up concerns with the diagonal parking that you guys had proposed, and that was then reworked, and I don't know if you've seen the plans or if you paid attention to what was done, but rather than, um, change the parallel parking or make any changes, I feel like I was targeted unfairly, and I'm the only person on my side of the street there, on our block, who will have no on-street parking in front of their home anymore. In fact, there's been about a 50-foot or so large bulkout put in front of my house, eliminating mall parking in front of my house, and giving a fantastic spot for the bakery customers to come congregate in front of my home. On June 12th, I sent, uh, Mayor Smith a set of plans. The measurements on my side of the street versus the diagonal corner are almost exactly the same to the foot, and I propose that we can do parallel parking. We don't have to lose any of my front yard, which I understand is in the public right-of-way, we're not gonna get into the semantics of that, but the neighbors next to me and everyone else on the street, their property lines, as we call them, what we are using, stay the same. Mine is the only one that will be impacted to allow for three diagonal parking spaces. I have a 15-year-old driver, a 17-year-old driver, a work vehicle, myself and my girlfriend, who all have vehicles. With this proposed change- With this proposed change, that I, again, feel very unfairly attacked, and the only person losing property value by having no on-street parking, I feel that putting another commercial space next to me, we lose the control of that being a low, you know, low-density-type-use building. Whatever they propose to do, they really aren't in control of what their tenants end up doing down the road. They have multiple employees that come in and take that parking. We're already dealing with the Crestwell Bakery and the parking. And losing my on-street parking, when I sent this proposal, I increased the parking by adding parallel spots, which negates the need for the taxpayers to pay for this 50-foot bump out of concrete, and keeps my property as it's been used, and increases the parking on our street by two. I've yet to hear back as to why that hasn't been changed in the plans, or if it has. I know, I know I sent the email some time ago, but we haven't had time to follow up, and I've heard nothing from the city. But I'm curious why you think it's a good idea to change a building in an area where parking is an issue and give them the ability to use it as a commercial space, increasing the need for parking, yet you're going to eliminate all of the parking in front of the only citizen who's been the most vocal about this? I don't think that that is, I don't feel like that's a coincidence. And I think that, I'm fully in favor of them doing what they want with their building, and I'm not in favor of you moving forward with this without thinking of the ramifications of the pettiness that I feel the city is imparting upon me. I think you need to look at that, that parking situation again, especially if you're going to be increasing the potential traffic. They've been a fantastic neighbor. This is not personal. Joe came over last night. We had a conversation. It was very hard for me to tell him that I could not be in favor. If I want to stand up and show my children what fighting for your rights is, I can't be in favor of this. I have to protect our property and our rights, and I understand that my opinion is just one person's opinion. But if you're going to increase the amount of commercial buildings in a residential/commercial area, you have to think about how eliminating on-street parking is impacting the people that live there. I'm not in favor of this going through unless you look back through and fix this parking issue. There's no reason why the bakery should have 50 feet of my frontage for their customers to stand. Understand, it's not my property, but visually, it's impacting my property, and also use case, you've eliminated a use case of my property, and I've talked to multiple real estate agents who have told me that that will make your home harder to sell. That will devalue your home. You have made that decision in spite, is my opinion, and I think it needs to be looked at again, especially if you're going to change this to a commercial property. That's really all I have to say. I wish I would have made a nice PowerPoint, but I did.
Can I ask you real quick? Did you get a letter from the city asking your opinion? There was a 100-foot letter sent out? I just want to know if you?
I, I don't recall, but it doesn't mean that you didn't do it. I just throw the water bills away, so I pay them online. So it may have come and looked like a water bill. I'm not, I'm not going to say that I did or did not. But the first I heard of this was, actually, I think my neighbor got a flyer, and I, and that's right, she got a flyer when this was first happening, and I did not. I specifically checked through everything to see, what? Never mind, I'm a liar.
Thanks, I'll check.
I was pretty sure we didn't, but apparently we did.
Anyone else want to come up to speak? Bill?
My name is Bill Kitt, bakery customer. So as you entertained the idea last time, I'm having trouble conceptualizing what everybody thinks is happening. As far as I'm aware, the whole block is residential/commercial already, except for one building. So if your house is residential/commercial, this building is only asking to be the same as all the other houses on that block. You're not, you're not all of a sudden popping another bakery on a block that's only residential. A council years ago decided this would be a residential/commercial block. That's why the sidewalks on that whole block have to be up to a certain code, because it is already residential/commercial. So as I understand it, all they want to do is be treated like your house and have that zoning, because currently, the only one on the block disadvantaged is the Crestwell Heritage. That's, that's the way I understand it, sitting out there listening to it. But it seems to keep getting lost, and somehow, everybody thinks that you guys are all of a sudden going to pop another bakery. And the way Second Street, or D Street is going now, I think they're putting sub-level parking in anyway. That was a joke.
Chair wants to speak?
Sheriff Waltman, and I live on Second Street. What does this do to the historical part of that building? If you turn around and put it as commercial and it's rented out, does that take it off the historical registry? What's going to happen with that fact, that it's a historical building? Second question is, why has the construction stopped? And has anybody bothered to just actually come and watch the parking? It is a nightmare on that street right now, and all of our homes are, it's, you haven't had a wreck, and that is a miracle, and I count that as a blessing. But we didn't even get notified when Brandon's house, over half the front of his house, they put in bumpers which go right up to his fence line across this existing sidewalk for people to park east and west. They just get to drive into it. They can't figure it out. People are coming down with trucks and trailers. Why is that stopped? Why is the construction not going on? Do you want to keep adding, changing? I don't agree.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Shelley.
Shelley?
I'm a Crestwell resident. I just think, I implore you guys to do your due diligence, and it's now no longer owned by a public, so it shouldn't be public. It shouldn't have that public connotation. It should be just as everything else done on that road. People may not like it, but it's commercial, residential, and that's the zoning that it should be. Regardless of what happens, Crestwell First bought that building from the City of Crestwell because it was in disrepair, and they've made it a beautiful building, and it should become a trademark for people to come to Crestwell. And we shouldn't hinder them because we don't want to remove it as a public-owned building, but we want to make it as a residential/commercial, which is what everything else on that area is. They shouldn't be discriminated against because it used to be owned publicly, and it is no longer. And it should have been done when the city sold it. That was a previous counselor's error in judgment. That's it.
Any Shelley?
I'm getting positive.
First to speak?
My name's Alex. I don't live in Crestwell, but obviously, I work here, and I've invested in this community. I don't necessarily have any thought either way. The only thing I would mention, something that pops into my head thinking in a law enforcement standpoint, is our famous ordinance where people are allowed to put their trailers. If that is zoned as downtown commercial, that is now a place where somebody can drop their trailer and live in it. There are no residences adjacent right there in front of there. So that's something to consider. Doesn't matter to me, we're going to do what we do, but I want to throw that out there.
I appreciate you doing that. Your lady?
Okay, my name's Monica, and I have more questions than I have comments, but I always thought when you had a commercial endeavor, you had to have a certain amount of parking for that. Does the Heritage Foundation, do they have designated parking for that if it becomes commercial? Otherwise, they're going to have to park in front of people's houses and, and the bakery again.
Our, sorry, our policy is that we don't require off-street parking in our downtown commercial zone. So that's, that's our, our policy. So we don't have, people are expected to park on the street.
I will, this really doesn't have as much to do with that, the commercial status for that building or not, but I, I do want to caution you about changing, you know, with parking and stuff, because I live on Third Street, and coming up from Third Street onto Oregon Avenue, it is a disaster. You cannot stop at the stop sign and see the traffic. You have to go way past the stop sign. And I don't know if our sheriff will agree, but I was told that as long as I stop way back at the stop sign and I inch my way forward past the stop sign, I won't get a ticket. But that is dependent on. So, you know, if you move too fast on the street improvements, or parking, or whatever, you make mistakes. And I was told several years ago that Third Street was a mistake, that the way, it's way lower than Oregon Avenue, so you're sitting down. And I almost get hit almost every time pulling out. I usually turn around and go the other way. So you need to just take your time and look into these matters. Everybody's concerns should be taken in consideration, and, and just don't make a mistake. And I feel bad for the guy that has, you know, the parking at the bakery, some way about it, they're able, the bakery's great, but they are allowed to have parking, you know, customers park all over the place, and you go down there and, you know, other people don't have that advantage. You know, the Farland Market, I mean, they have to have parking. So I think the Heritage Foundation should figure out a way of having some designated parking. If they rent that building out for functions, I mean, where's, where are all the people going to park? I don't understand, you know, how they can do, how they can do that. I mean, it is a nice building. It is a historical building. I mean, a lot of the history, I feel, is gone because of all the changes, but, but if they rent it out for functions of some sort, I mean, if you had 20 cars come there, where are they all going to be? Even the bakery's going to be affected then. So you just need to think about it and consider it. Everybody's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daddy?
Go ahead.
Daddy? Pause it. You want to pause it?
My name's Miranda, and Brandon's girlfriend, so. Granted, I know it's residential/commercial, but the, like, when we all bought those houses, it was not the bakery, and so to add another business is, I know it's residential/commercial, but like, our 10-year-old learned how to ride a bike last year, because we have to wait until the bakery closes to use the street, because there's no sidewalk, there's no street. So if we open up another business that could potentially be open later in the day, our 10-year-old now has nowhere that she can ride her bike or play. There's a woman across the street that's pregnant. She's going to want her kid to ride a bike. There's people diagonal from us with kids. They want to ride bikes. They want to play. Again, it's residential/commercial, it's downtown, I understand, but the traffic has come with the bakery, and to add another business, that traffic's just going to potentially get bigger and bigger, and all of us with kids are going to be drastically affected. And it just makes me really sad to see all these kids not able to just live, because we lived in a city long before the bakery was the bakery. And to just add another business is just really sad to me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question?
Please do.
Through all these meetings, talking about parking, I failed to ask, is the parking in front of the bakery somewhere that I can park my vehicles, or is that going to be on bakery property?
As far as I understand, you're able to park in front of bakery. That is public parking.
But I know that they have made some, like, zigzaggies or, you know, kind of cut in, and so I was just, just clarifying.
Cliff, can you clarify?
Yeah. That's incorrect. The parking in front of the bakery is partially on bakery property, and so that has been part of the situation with the bakery, that they can control the parking in front of the bakery because it's partially on their, on their property, and they gave an easement for sidewalk.
So how many spots in front of the bakery?
Six or seven, I'd have to look at that.
Okay.
So I've been going through this entire thing, under the guise that I can park over there when there's no parking in front of my home, I strongly urge you to reconsider this parking situation. Because if that's public, if that's public land as well that has parking spaces designated, but it's on private, if that doesn't go back 10 feet onto their property, that's not considered a driveway. As of right now, I can park parallel, which would go against their lines. Will I still have the same rights? Are you going to come tell me? Because they're parking illegally as it is next to a sidewalk, and we're just turning a blind eye. They're blocking fire hydrants every day. We're turning a blind eye. When this happens, I will do what I can legally do regardless of what the city wants me to do. I'm making that very clear right now.
Fair enough, as you should. Anyone else want to speak?
I think that was also not really made apparent by the city to us, and now we're too damn far into this.
We're not too far into it. It's not doing anything.
It's like they halted.
Anyone else want to speak on camera and microphone?
Oh, I'll come back.
Just, just so everyone on Second Street is aware, I brought this up vehemently with Curtis, with Curtis' last meeting, and so I can absolutely not vote for this until I hear from anyone on Second Street.
I did too.
So to Councilor Holt, so please review the camera. I had you guys, I wanted to hear what Second Street had to say. I was not, absolutely not going to get into another fight with Second Street without hearing from you guys. So thank you for coming, whether you hate us or love us, I'm glad we're having a conversation. I'm glad you came. I'm glad you stepped up to speak, because it helps, because we can't make a decision if we don't hear from them, whether good, bad, or indifferent. I want to make a decision what's best for you guys and what's best for the town as a whole, and unfortunately, sometimes that makes you guys upset. We are trying to make the best decision for Crestwell as a whole, but you guys are directly impacted, so that is the goal, to try and not directly impact you as much as humanly possible.
Well, and I think it's important to point out, I agree with the point that was made that when the business, when it got transferred, but that building was transferred with the intent to be restored, not with the intent to become a commercial building. It then got transferred to, again, this guy's amazing. What they do is really great. This is very hard for me to say, because I absolutely respect this man and everything that he's doing, but that building was never intended to become an office or a small thrift shop, or whatever you want to do. We can't control what they do with it, nor, nor should I have the right to, but I am speaking because that was not the intent of that building when it was transferred. It was to be, it was to be done by them for our community to have a restored building, not to have another business in Crestwell in an already congested area.
Well, there might be some things that Crestwell can do in the budget to help out with that situation, too. We've done that before, and we can do it again. So if anyone else doesn't want to speak, I got to close up in here. Go ahead.
Why can't we get notices to, before they start putting in the different kind of parking that they did on Second Street? Come home, and all the parking's been changed. Like I said, it goes across the sidewalk, and it's a zoo out there. Why? Nothing is being done on D Street. We were supposed to start Second Street the beginning of July. We're supposed to start Second Street the beginning of August. Everything's at a standstill, and we are left with, we're left with a mess out there.
I can't answer that one, to be honest with you. If you want to email me and Cliff and CC, the new city manager, Vincent, I'd be happy to try and get you an answer. I can't speak to that because I don't know. I know it's construction, and things come up, and deadlines get pushed back, and vendors are out of stock and stuff like that, but I can't speak anymore to that. But I, please email me, CC Vincent, CC Cliff.
It could be weather-related, too. They can't pour concrete in certain heats. It just doesn't, it doesn't.
I'm well aware about construction, and I'm well aware about what real plans look like. No, but we didn't even get notified or told that they were going to change all the parking. There's just very lack of communication. Again, still a lot of lack of honesty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close up in here. Counselors, I'm just going to go ahead and suggest a motion that we move this to another work session. Can I get a second? Councilor Holt, second it. Can we have discussion? You sure can. Why would I not? Anybody got any comments? Councilor Castillo?
I have a, I have a question, a clarifying question for possibly Cliff. If I heard correctly, Brandon, you said that the parking If I heard correctly, Brandon, you said that the parking plan has changed from the plan that we spent multiple hours approving?
You are correct.
That's the first I've heard of it. And so I would like for Cliff to please clarify that.
That's incorrect. The plan that was brought to council, I don't remember what month it was, but the last one that you guys looked at, and you voted on and approved, is the same set of plans that we're building out from right now. Nothing has changed. It was approved by council.
Now, and just to also clarify, if those plans were changed, would they not have to come back for approval?
They wouldn't necessarily have to, but in this instance, we would, because the council approved that to be built that way, and this has been, you know, an issue we've had to work through with council, that we normally don't on projects, so with this project, we would have brought it back, absolutely.
Thank you, sir, good, that, that is my understanding.
Is there a change order threshold, so like, if there's a small change order, you wouldn't have had to bring it to us, though, right? I mean, you guys had some work.
That's correct. And there was a change order associated with it, and Spencer approved it when he was there.
Counselors, any other further questions or comments, concerns? Counselor Holt?
Um, I, I just wanna say that questioning the impact of making this change on our Second Street neighbors, that were impacted so gravely by prior councils, in my opinion, terrible decision, to rezone that street in the first place is not discrimination. I think that we are doing our due diligence to try to see all the pieces, try to understand all the ways that this impacts our neighbors on Second Street. It, it's a, it's a difficult situation. If I were a homeowner on that street, I'd be crying. And, you know, I, I don't think that everything in life is fair either, but I think pushing this to another work session and having more discussion on it is a responsible thing to do right now.
Okay. Any other comments or concerns before we vote? Vincent, I know you don't have the schedule in front of you, but we can talk soon. Kayla, maybe you'll speak to this, too, on how's our agenda looking in September?
I can let you see, if you guys want.
Well, Vincent has it in his hand.
The next work session is September 26th.
Is it fairly open on our, I know we haven't discussed it yet, but?
We have Finance Administration Committee, Public Safety Committee, Transportation and Public Works Committee, Parks and Trees Committee, Airport Commission, El Cog and Land Area Commission on Transportation, all listed, but they haven't necessarily been locked in.
We have no other presentations right now?
Not at this.
So let's try and book that for?
We have to vote on it.
Oh, yeah, but I wanted to, that's where we're going, so.
We, can I just?
Please do.
Um, we'll have a discussion item on the wastewater update, and a plan amendment potentially for economic opportunities analysis.
So it's potential we could have it September?
Yeah, I think given the conversation, we can make it work.
Okay. All right, well, I want that on camera. Some of the stuff I'm doing is just make sure it's heard, it's out loud, and we're arguing about it, but everybody here can hear it, people who are watching can hear it. So if there's any more comments or questions, I'm gonna go ahead and vote.
May I make one more comment?
Go ahead, Curtis.
I just wanted, so, a lot of the concerns that, from what I'm hearing, are traffic generated, and where are people gonna park? And I just wanted to say that Crestwell First is a nonprofit, and in order to maintain their nonprofit status, they, they can't have a ton of vendors at their facility, because then they have to pay property taxes, so, um, in my mind, that, that weighs into the, the traffic generation questions a little bit.
Thank you.
It does, thank you.
That's helpful. Okay. Everybody else has finished comments? Let's go ahead and vote. And our, the vote, the motion is to move this discussion, not vote on it tonight, we're gonna move it to the next work session at the end of September. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. We're gonna let it vote, and move it to work, uh, September work session. Speaker Martone?
Mayor, is there anything specific you'd like staff to bring back to you? Just let us know, and we can have something prepared for you, if it's going to be outside of general discussion.
If we can, I'd just like to put out, make sure that we put out more letters, make sure more Second people, Second Street people, and those affected, that are gonna be affected by this can come.
Okay.
Because usually work sessions, uh, normally, we don't normally speak this much with the audience, I'm bullet hearings, I feel like I give a lot more to everyone else, because I wanna hear your voice. Work sessions, if we gotta go all night, we'll go all night. I got little kids, I gotta get to bed, too, but I got a wife who supports me a lot, and helps with that, so, but I will go all night if I have to, for you guys.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Castillo?
Just one thing, if, if, Curtis, if you could bring some specifics as to what you just spoke of, of the limitations to, to their advance, that would be great, probably helpful. Thank you.
And maybe the ordinance with the wagons as well, that Alex, or Sergeant Spelvich brought up, is another big one. If we change that to commercial, will they get down and park right in front of his house, her house?
As a wagon owner, there's no way in hell we're gonna put a wagon down there. There's way too conflicted, crowded, busy, noisy, so.
Sergeant Spelvich?
So the, the way the ordinance reads is it can't be adjacent to a residence, which would basically make that one spot right in front of.
Right in there.
And just because a wagon doesn't go there, doesn't mean a fifth wheel doesn't, or a motorhome, or whatever. It's just something to consider.
Okay. Counselor Holt?
Brandon, please show up to the work session, so that you can be part of.
I'll have a PowerPoint at that one.
We want for you guys to be part of that discussion. Thank you.
All right. Everybody ready? Here we go. Okay, the vote is? Already?
We already voted, yeah.
Did you get the, I don't know, there's a lot going on, did you get the vote in fashion and actually? Okay, all right, we're gonna move on to item C, which is Curtis again, no throwing spitballs or paper, Curtis here, he's doing his job.
Okay. So my final item is to ask for your permission to have a letter of support for a couple of housing projects. And so, so DLCD, Department of Land Conservation Development, uh, every two years, they, they give municipalities funds for, for housing projects, and we've historically been a part of them in the past. And so this, this year, uh, there's three projects that, that I'm eyeballing, and one is a, so in, in the slideshow, uh, we saw a little snippet of the 2019 Housing Needs Analysis. As a part of this grant, we can update that Housing Needs Analysis to, to 2025, 2026. So we can update our numbers, and we can do it on the state's dime. And so that's, so our, our Housing Needs Analysis, it's from 2019, uh, 2018, 2019, so it's not obsolete, but it is kind of getting closer to the end of its useful life. I think best practice for a housing needs document is maybe 10 years, and we're, we're a year of seven or eight, so we're kinda, kinda closing, close to it. And this is a pro, a project that El Cog is applying for on our behalf, and it's a part of a multi-city effort with, uh, Coburg Cottage Grove in Crestwell. And having a Housing Needs Analysis is important, um, because it helps kind of build the foundation for a growth boundary expansion, or it says Crestwell has enough, um, land, it doesn't need to expand the growth boundary. And so just to kind of take a step back, Housing Needs Analysis, what it is, is it looks at all the residential land within Crestwell, and it kind of takes an inventory of how many parcels are vacant, how many parcels could be developed on, and then it looks at a population forecast, uh, out, out the next 20 years, and then it kind of does a math equation to say, do we have enough land for the next 20 years of growth? And so that's, that's one project. And then another project is in effort to lower the barrier for homeownership. One of the tools that, that we have as planners is, is our Development Code, and this Development Code Amendment would allow for land divisions of, of middle housing, and so, uh, middle housing, it's, it's kind of an unofficial name, workforce housing could be another name, but it's, it's the housing type that's in between a single-family home and a large apartment complex. Duplexes, cottage clusters are all, uh, middle housing type. And so when we were looking at the cottage clusters a few months ago, I, I think one of the concerns that Planning Commission had, I, I don't recall if City Council raised it, too, was, was the ownership model of, of different housing types. And, um, this type of land division could, basically, if there's a, a $600,000 duplex for sale, um, now two property owners could divide it into, and now you have a $300,000 uh, unit of, of property for sale. It kind of effectively changes how we look at minimum lot sizes. And to be honest, I'm not sure if Crestwell has the appetite for it yet. I've reviewed some projects, and Eugene Springfield, Cliff and I had a meeting last week, and kind of walked through some of the problems with, with these types of land divisions, and just splitting up utilities, and it can really be kind of a pain in the butt. But, again, this is, uh, state, um, housing money, just for, for us to kind of look into and see if it's possible. And then the last project is a, for a localized, um, it's called a refinement plan in our, in, in the industry. And so if you look at the, the map that's towards the back of your packet, you'll see a, a rectangle, and that's, that's where the, the neighborhood is. And so this neighborhood is made up of parcels that are two acres, three acres, five acres in size, they're all very redevelopable, um, but they don't have access to, to the critical infrastructure. Uh, none of these properties have, have a direct connection to sewer, uh, the, the water line will need to be increased. It's all along a state highway, it's on 99, and if there is a good-sized subdivision, like that road will have to be updated with the traffic lights, stop signs, uh, things like that. Uh, there's 10 acres of wetlands that need to be mitigated, um, in, in this neighborhood, too. But what's probably the most important thing is, uh, the, the landowners are willing. I've talked to numerous of them over the years, for people who wanna sell their property, and they say, hey, I'd like to do a subdivision, and, um, even before the, the sewer moratorium, the answer would be no, because you had to extend the utilities, um, uh, and, and that just presented an insurmountable hurdle for a lot of these projects, so. So the idea is to just kind of use this grant funding as a way to help organize and kind of coordinate the property owners, and say, hey, this is what we think all the infrastructure's gonna cost, like, this is what it's gonna look like. And, uh, probably plan for, one of the trickier parts of this is that a wetland mitigation piece, it's interesting to me, but, uh, like, finding where the wetland mitigation will take place, you kind of need all the property owners to, to be on board with that. So, yeah, okay, that's. Any questions?
Counselors? Counselor Kramer?
So, um, I know we talked a little bit about Measure 49, is Measure 49 included in all these adjustments that you're thinking of, well, possibly putting in subdivisions, or even a cluster, or even apartment complex? I know the state wants us to do this, but do you take that in consideration?
Um, all the properties that, i- in that checkered box, about half the properties are already within city limits, and half are still counting, and so at that point of annexation, it would be just like the procedure we had tonight with the Measure 49 plan. Is that, is that kind of what you're asking?
Well, it's just, it's just really whenever we're, we're putting a new project or house in another place, and this place is outside of maybe city limits, and, but now it's coming in. Now, if you put in apartment complexes, the owner next to it says, you're devaluing my property, is any of this getting taken in consideration?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I mean, what, the goal of this project is to figure out what will make this area pencil, and if it ends up being that... Yeah, I mean, if, if it doesn't pencil, then it doesn't pencil, um, and if the, the landowners don't like the, if there's, if there, if there is a rezoning to these properties that accompany this, and the landowners don't wanna do it, we're not gonna go forward. Um, so we're kind of trying to work with the landowners and say, hey, like, we're not, all right, my, my thought looking ahead is not only cottage clusters, not only duplexes, but kind of, a, kind of a mix of housing types.
My ears perk when you say cottage clusters, they're not in a good way, so don't, I wouldn't use that term for me.
Yeah.
So if we were to move forward, and I was to sign this letter, and allow Vincent to execute, uh, what are we on the hook for? If we're to get money, do we have to give it back if we don't follow through with it, with cottage clusters?
The only difference with the, uh, the new Housing Needs Analysis, it's called a Housing Capacity Analysis, and one of the fundamental differences between the two is that if we adopt a Housing Capacity Analysis that says we have a housing need, we have to make action on that, so we either have to expand our growth boundary, or we have to increase density within the growth boundary. Uh, it sounds like expanding the growth boundary is more palatable, so that's, that's kind of what we could be signing up for.
Counselor Holt?
So we could be voting ourselves into having to follow state law to do it exactly the way they want us to?
Yeah, I would kind of call this a, a funded mandate, um, but, yeah, that, that's a way you can word it, I, I guess.
Counselor Duke?
Well, um, looking at some of this, with the state of order, and saying that they wanna make better housing for more people, make it affordable. I know I have a son, 22, he lives in a two-bedroom apartment, and he's paying $1,500 a month, and it's going up. That's not affordable for the income of the, what he's got. And so when they're, when the state's saying that they wanna make affordable housing, I kind of think that's a bunch of BS. And so, I mean, when you, when they're wanting us to build apartments and stuff like that, I don't think it's gonna be making ready apartments, they're gonna be going for $2,500. I mean, I've seen some of the stuff up in Portland, it's, it's outrageous, but people are paying for a studio apartment, they're paying $2,500 a month. I, it's just ridiculous, when they, when they're wanting to mandate to us, that says we want more affordable housing, but then when they build more stuff, it's more expensive. I, I mean, two-bedroom house, yeah, I, I get that. I mean, I, I was paying, I, I rented here in Crestwell, a house, and I was paying, when I first moved here, it's $600 a month for a two-bedroom house, or a three-bedroom house. It went up to $1,000, but I had a great landlord. And that, that wasn't a corporation, because when we get corporations, start getting into this stuff, it, the money starts going up, and it's not affordable anymore. And when the state starts mandating that we do this, of course, it's like insurance, they're gonna start making it where it's more expensive. And so apartments and these small houses, I'm not interested in, not in this town.
Counselor Duke? Anybody else? Well, you had me at cottage clusters, and then I, you know, to try and get some of our tax money back on all four, but I just don't think I can do this one, so, I'm entertaining a motion.
And you can pick one or two, or you can reject all three, I guess.
Okay. Counselors, does that change anybody's opinion? Counselor Castillo?
Our, the Crestwell Housing Needs Analysis, uh, the last time was done in 2018, or 19? Okay, 18? And I think I've heard comments, and even tonight, that it's slightly, it, it's slightly off to some, to some degree, but a lot of things happened since then, you know, there was no way of predicting, uh, you know, the market, and pandemic, and so forth. So I think it would be very, a very useful tool to have an updated Crestwell Housing Needs Analysis, and in a sense, that's what we would be doing. Correct?
Yeah.
And just that, that's what Project One is what Counselor Castillo's referring to. It made a difference, you can vote one, two, or three, I thought you were trying to get us to go all three at once.
No, and, and for.
And, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. And, um, and regardless whether we receive some grant money to move forward with this, the state is still going to require or mandate us to meet certain requirements for our housing, correct?
Eventually, we're, we're not, since we're below 10,000 in population, uh, we're not on a timeline like the Cottage Grove is, for example. So, um, by moving forward the Housing Capacity Analysis, it does kind of put us on a timeline that we would otherwise not be on. I think it's, the housing, the, the project will take about two years, and in my mind, that timing is pretty good, because it's right before our moratorium's lifted, so that way we can expand UGB, raise, lift the sewer moratorium, and the timing kind of we can expand the UGB, raise, lift the sewer moratorium, and the timing kind of works out.
Counselor Kramer?
So I have another question about affordable housing. So if we have to comply with this, is Oregon going to mandate how much a, not the renter, but the landlord, they can like charge every year, like the up, down, like, or they maxed out at 1% every year that they can raise their rent? Is there anything that stops, because, I mean, Oregon's not, they are not going to mandate everybody, like, a landlord or say, hey, look, you gotta do this, or tell him has to do that, and they're going to say, we need something, that's what they wanted. But the reality part to it is that we can't tell the landowners, you have only 1% that you can do every year for your, an increase. And then, you know, what's going to, how is that going to get mandated? You know, whenever you can't stop somebody from getting so much money? I don't know if there's anything in that plan.
There are a lot of things that make housing not affordable to a lot of people. I think with planning and zoning and the development code, I can only influence so much. You're right, rent increases are part of it too. They're, I mean, if you're like an affordable housing project, or your tenants have to meet income requirements, but that's a pretty specific program.
If the feds are just lower the rate, quit taxing us so much, no problem. Counselor?
I just, I have real concerns, you know, like you said, well, this is perfect timing because when we, you know, have our, this will be about the time we have our moratorium lifted. We have no guarantee that moratorium is going to be lifted. We have no guarantee we're going to meet all of those goals. We just don't know that right now. And I think putting us on the hook to be emboldened to do something else in a certain timeframe is not a good idea right now. I think that we should focus on a little bit less of the time than trying to steamroll growth into Crestwell, so.
Okay. Counselors, any other questions or comments? Entertaining a motion, or maybe I'm not? So there's no motion to pass?
Correct.
So the motion passed, I'm done with that. Thank you, Currys. All right, please review the city calendar for all upcoming events, especially work sessions, and hopefully there'll be some agendas on there, so you know where and when to be. Other than that, we're adjourned.